Wow, welcome everyone to December 29, 2020 conference agenda. Luke, can you start us off with the roll call please?
I guess not.
No, hey, hold on, as soon as Luke gets back, we'll get started.
He's trying to get on and then he'll do the roll call. I don't know.
That appears to be Lou's office making that noise.
President.
If you like, I could call roll and we could get started, I don't know.
Yeah, why don't you do that? I don't know where Sandy went. Sandy, you still there?
Yeah, sure.
I could, I mean, we. Lou is having technical difficulties. Matthew, maybe if you pull up an announcement of the open public meetings law, that would be great. All right, so welcome to the December 29.
Administrator, administrator.
He's on.
Wait, I was trying to get Freeholder Duffy on, all right? Just be, give me two seconds, please.
Surely.
And don't call Shirley.
We'll, we'll get this remote meeting thing right one of these days.
Good morning, everyone.
There you go.
Okay. Sorry about that, just trying to get Freeholder Duffy on. All right, Freeholders' OpTare.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy. James.
Here.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lazar.
Here. Can we have an announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has. Hey, no, it's the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders on January 6, 2020, adopted Resolution R 2020-0001, which calls for the location of a regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 29, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. to be held in the Freeholder Meeting Room, Passaic County Administration Building, 401 Grand Street, Second Floor, Patterson, New Jersey. Due to the state of emergency and the public health emergency declared by the New Jersey Governor Philip Murphy, set forth an executive order 103 and further limitations of public gatherings, set forth an executive order 104. The Board will hold their regular meeting virtually via Facebook Live and Cisco Webex. Additionally, pursuant to administrative order 20-01 issued by the Passaic County Administrator, closing the administration building to nonessential personnel, the public effective March 18, 2020, 8:30 a.m. The Board is canceling the conference agenda of the meeting and shall hold a regular meeting at 10:00 a.m. with no further members of the public physically present, as authorized by NJSA 10:4-12A. If a member of the public wishes to place a public comment on record, please email public@passaiccounty, stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the Board no later than Tuesday, December 29, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. or participating on Facebook Live at facebook.com/passaiccountynj or via webex at https://www.passaiccountynj.org/freeholdermeeting. The clerk of the Board shall read the same to the public record. Moreover, some members of the Board may participate telephonically pursuant to Board bylaws and in compliance with NJSA 10:4-12-1 at sec official action will be taken. This was published in the Herald News and the Bergen Record.
Thank you. Can we have the invocation, please?
Lou, I wasn't trying to, Lou, I wasn't trying to take your job.
Oh, I know.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Invocation? "Oh God, it provides for thy people by that power, pools up for them in love. Be precious enough, bless thy servants, our freeholders, the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord." Amen.
Amen. And the pledge of allegiance, Freeholder Duffy?
Yes, my pleasure. My pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States.
America. The public, the public stands. One nation. As a God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And just a moment of silence, please, for the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all those who have succumbed to the pandemic and.
Director, if I may add, Passaic County lost another member of its family, albeit retired. John Oderaka was a prosecutor, an AP, Assistant Prosecutor. He retired as Chief of Major Crimes in the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office in 2012, 59 to his battle with cancer, but like, so we keep his family in our prayers as well.
So, just a moment of silence, everyone, please. Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of December 8, 2020?
Second.
Freeholders' OpTare.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go on to Freeholder Reports. I just want to wish everybody the happiest of holidays. We're going into, as I quote, "a surge upon a surge with the COVID, please." We have all the information on our website at www.passaiccountynj.org. Please visit the website for tips on how to avoid getting sick and our testing dates. And, you know, we wish everybody the best New Year, but in order to do so, we all need to be vigilant in keeping our distance and wearing our masks and washing our hands. But we can do this and we will get through this together. Thank you.
Director, if I may, if I could just give the Board a quick update on vaccinations. We, Passaic County, has received its first batch of vaccines, I believe 500 in total. We, hopefully, by sometime the end of today, or at the latest tomorrow morning, we'll have our site, passaiccountyvax.org, that's V-A-X dot org, where members who fall into the 1A category will be able to go on, sign up for the first vaccine, which we plan on doing on December 31, which is this Thursday, at 9:30 Riverview Drive, at the home of what will be the new Health Department. So it's exciting news that we'll be able to be vaccinating our first group of residents who fall into the 1A category. Yet it will be Passaic County Vax, V-A-X dot org, where you'll go in, make your appointment, fill out some questions that you appropriately fall into the 1A category, and then you will be able to be vaccinated beginning on Thursday. It's an ongoing process as we get through 1A, go through 1B, so on and so forth. But I think it's exciting news. I know Charlene has been working very hard on it, along with Kelly in my office, to set this up. We are going to partner again with Vault Health. Vault Health, we again will be Vault's first client, where they will completely take care of the vaccination, bringing their personnel, and also handling the insurance aspect. As you know, we're required to accept insurance for COVID testing. Passaic County did not take insurance, but we are required to for vaccinations. We know out-of-pocket costs for, for any residents, but insurance companies will reimburse.
How many, how many doses do we have, Ken?
If we could give Charlene, I jumped the, the Freeholder Reports, and I should have asked Charlene to please share her report in addition to Anthony's with us before we go to the Freeholder Reports.
Before she does that, can we just get the number of vaccines you got in again, Tony?
We have 500 vaccines in hand now, and obviously, we expect more. We just don't know when, pretty much.
This is the Moderna, the Moderna vaccine?
That's correct.
All right, so that, I just, one little question. It's a two-shot thing, so does that mean that we could do 250 people, or we're gonna roll the dice and make sure?
Yeah, we're gonna do, if we have 500 people signed up, we will do 500 people on Thursday. They will get their second appointment 28 days from, from tomorrow at the same location for the second shot.
And we should have another 500 by that date?
We, we hope to have more vaccines this week before the end of this week.
Oh, good, okay.
Again, until you have, you don't have them.
Thanks, Anthony. Dr. Gungill, if you wanted just, you know, add to what our Administrator said, or give us another update. That would be welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Freeholder. I can do both. The, so yes, we did receive 500 vaccines, and we are targeting, as we recorded, to the folks that are in the 1A group, and I'll go through that a little bit later. We were told by the CDC that we will get the sufficient vaccines for this first batch. In other words, we can vaccinate up to 500 people. They will make sure that we have the other 500 for the second dose for those people. And we're working on trying to make sure that the registration process that we're doing also includes a callback piece so that people can come back. The CDC also sent us cards where people can, we can write in, and, you know, it's like a, like a doctor's card to remind them to come back the second time. And I know internally, we're gonna try to figure out some ways that we could, whether it's a callback or whatever, so that people are reminded to come back. We're thinking more a callback and/or a text to remind people that the next day is coming up and that they need to be there. So I think that's gonna be the hardest thing to bring people back for the second shot. Um, yeah.
Now, would there be a way to set up the passaiccountyvax.org site to automatically schedule both appointments when people do their login?
I think that's what Vault is trying to do, and I'm sure with Micah, they'll figure out how to do that, yeah.
Yes, so we are gonna try to do that, Freeholder. Obviously, we wanted to get this site up as quick as possible for Thursday, so it'll be a work in progress. But obviously, we'd like to be able to schedule the second appointment immediately while they're scheduling the first. So we think it could be done, but it may not be for, for Thursday.
Okay, all right, so I have a brief, brief, as in much briefer than all my other overviews. This is the annual one because it's just about a year since COVID came and created havoc in our community. So whenever Mr. Micah is ready. All right, so as you know, this is what the SARS-CoV- looks like, next slide. And as of yesterday, we had 39, over 39,000 cases in Passaic County, and yesterday was day number 291, next slide. We still rank in the top five, but some other counties are coming up. For example, Ocean County is getting a tremendous amount of cases, as, as is Camden and Monmouth County. So I'm hoping, unfortunately, but I'm hoping that we will get, finally get out of that top five of confirmed cases in the state, next slide. However, we continue to have the highest per 100,000 or per capita cases, and that number just keeps increasing. I think one of the reasons why we're seeing that is that we're doing a tremendous amount of testing. And testing, testing does not give us cases. Testing identifies cases that are in the community that we would not have known about. So even though we have higher numbers, the numbers are a testament to the work that we're doing, and we're pulling people who may have been asymptomatic out of circulation so that they don't get to spread more, more COVID in the community. But it's still concerning to me, and I'd like us to really, you know, I can't wait for the vaccines to start circulating so we can bring these numbers down, next slide. So this slide is a slide of totals. I mentioned the number of cases. The number of deaths in Passaic County is 1278. There are about 150 more that, that we believe are COVID-related, but those persons had not been tested, so we can't officially count them. Hospitalizations are 3804, and I wanted to, I had never brought this to the table before, for the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. Out of 67 cases in the state, we have 10 of them. And we've had 10 for maybe the last two or three months, but, you know, it's something that we need to think about. They've also seen multi-system inflammatory syndrome in adults, and it's a little bit different in that, you know, there is the stomach issues, there is diarrhea and vomiting, and in all of the cases, the thing they had in common was COVID-19. And of course, anything that affects a child affects an adult worse because our immune system are, in many cases, are compromised. Next slide, please. All right, so this is an Epi curve, just showing you a different view of it. As you could see, you know, we had our most cases in April, and we crushed the curve, and we had, we're pretty level for a while, and then you see a dramatic increase. I want you to also notice that on this slide, I have put the positivity rate as of yesterday. The positivity rate for Passaic County was 13.17. That means of all of the, of all of the testing we had done the previous seven days, 13% of those PCR positive tests, 13% of those tests were positive. At our worst, December 1, our highest positivity was 74.07. But I also want to mind you that this was during the time after Thanksgiving that the numbers were so great. And I wanted to show you that because when we tell people to socially distance, and, you know, even if it's family, to be mindful and to wear their masks, these are the reasons why. The numbers are dramatic once people gather, as, you know, as they have been gathering. Next slide, please. This is just another way to show you the breakdown by, by age in Passaic County of, of cases. So the 50 to 59 is most represented in cases, and the older adults, 90 to plus, 80 plus, 70 plus, are not as representative, but in terms of deaths, they are the ones that are most represented. And that's why the CDC changed their guidance for Phase 1C from 65 to 74. They actually, 65 and above, they actually have pulled out 75-year-old residents and older to be in the 1B group, which is the first responder group for vaccination, because there's so much at risk. Next slide, please. All right, these are our cases by gender, so it's approximately even between male and female. And this is our breakdown by recent ethnicity. And different to most of the nearby counties, we see 50% of our cases in Hispanic, persons who identify with the ethnicity Hispanic. We also see in this slide, the brown one is, it says other, non-Hispanic, and we believe that that represents our Arabic and Turkish and so friends who don't identify with Hispanic nor with white. So our numbers are a little bit, our pie chart is a little bit different than the state. Next slide, please. All right, so these are the, I pulled out long-term care. We still continue to see outbreaks in the long-term care. Currently, we have 26 outbreaks going on throughout the county, but we don't have recent deaths that are attributed to COVID-19, which is a good thing. Next slide, please. All right, our testing program, as you know, we have the best testing program in the state, and I say it because I mean it. Our at-home test program has tested over 20,000 individual tests have been completed, and Wayne continues to lead the pack as the ones who are utilizing this at-home test program the most, followed now by Clifton and by the city of Patterson. So for the others, if you know, family and friends that live in the other municipalities, please let them know that we are still doing it and that they're welcome to do this in the safety and privacy of their own homes. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of who is testing at home, the, by age. The youngest of residents, 18 to 30, are represented the most, and, and we kind of expected that. They are very comfortable in using that resource. The 51 to 60 continues to amaze me because they are exceeding the younger ones. And I, I, I want to think, I mean, I have not done the research, but I want to think that part of it is the 51 to 60-year-olds know that, that they're older and that they might have underlying conditions and issues and family to be concerned about. The 31 to 40 and 40 to 41 to 50, perhaps, you know, they don't see it quite the same way. And obviously, with the older adults, we do see some use, but it's usually a younger person getting the test kits for the older relative. And next slide, please. The mobile testing continues. As of yesterday, we had tested over 30,000 with the mobile unit. Today, we're testing up at our West Milford, and there was a long line, so I'm expecting perhaps around 1,000. The last two times we tested, we averaged about 1,000 tests per day. Next slide, please. All right, so give you an update on the vaccination plan. Mr. De Nova has given you the update that we're about to, to get started with ours. The only other health department that received vaccines thus far is the city of Patterson, and they began their program, I believe it was yesterday. They're doing walk-up, I believe, at their health department. We, all sites are scheduled to be open by next week, and all, all the municipal health departments that have submitted their requests for vaccines expect to receive them, if not the end of the week, early next week. Next slide, please. All right, so this is, I had shown you this slide last time. This is the breakdown by CDC. We are doing Phase 1A right now, which are long-term care residents, healthcare personnel in hospitals, private offices. It also includes public health, and next slide, I have a more of a breakdown. So this is the healthcare personnel, as, as the feds had determined earlier. You can see it also includes pharmacy, home healthcare, emergency medical services, and so on. The hospitals and long-term care are the ones that have received the Pfizer vaccine. They have the facilities to, to, to keep them at the ultra cold temperature. The long-term care were required to work with Walgreens and CVS for that piece, and so I believe either today or this week, that long-term care throughout the state have begun their vaccination program. Next slide, please. All right, so people have been asking and calling this office and emailing me regarding the COVID-19 vaccine, and yes, I am going to get the Moderna vaccine. This is what we have received. And I've done a lot of reading about it, for, you know, professionally and personally, because I decided that if I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna do all my homework. But I just wanted to put this out there, that COVID-19 vaccines do not give you, will not give you COVID because there is no COVID organism in the vaccine, all right? It's not gonna help you to test positive for COVID. Again, there is no COVID in the vaccine. Some of the calls we're getting are, you know, I've had COVID before, can I take the vaccine? And the answer is yes, because currently, we don't have enough research to let us know how long you may be protected naturally after having had the vaccine. I mean, after having COVID, because we don't have enough time to understand what COVID is doing. So the recommendation is that even if you have had COVID before, the recommendation is yes, you can still get the vaccine. However, while you are symptomatic, while you have tested positive, it is not recommended that you get the vaccine at that time. So wait until the course of the disease has gone through you, you've tested negative, and then you can get your vaccine. Getting the vaccine can help prevent getting sick with COVID-19. Yes, it will diminish your symptoms, and in some cases, you will not even contract the, the virus. Receiving the mRNA vaccine will not alter your, your DNA. So getting the, the vaccines that have been approved, you're getting sort of a recipe. Putting in your body a recipe that tells your body how to respond if it sees any of this trying to come in. So it does not go into the nucleus of your cell and changes you. It does not do that. It just, it's a recipe of, of, if this happens, then we will create antibodies, we'll create a response, but it's not changing you. Next slide, please. Some more vaccine information. As I mentioned, we are getting the Moderna vaccine, and that's where I did most of my research because that's the one that public health is distributing. From the Fed's standpoint, it's a, it's a top priority. There is an app called Be Safe, and you can take a look at that app, put, you know, download it to your phone, and you'll have all kinds of questions that you have about. This vaccine will be answered there. The Moderna, similar to the Pfizer vaccine, requires two doses. And as Freeholder James has asked, we are going to be provided with all of the, the vaccines that we need. In other words, the 500 that we've received, we can vaccinate 500 people, and the feds have told us that we are going to get the 500 more for those people. Currently, the reason why we're doing the phase-in approach is that the supply is limited throughout the country, so that's the reason why we can't do mass vaccinations yet. And we're targeting people who are, A, directly in contact with others, who might be exposed more to COVID than others, and who are at greatest risk. So that's the reason why they came up with the phase-in system. A very important point I want to make is that the COVID vaccine is free. We are required to bill insurance, but if somebody has no insurance, don't worry about it, you can still come and redoing the mass vaccination because there are ways that we can handle it behind the scenes. But the COVID vaccine is free. All right, so the last point is that, is that the vaccine is one tool in a toolbox. The toolbox includes wearing your masks, socially distance yourself. The toolbox includes wearing your masks, socially distance yourself, and so on. All the things we've been doing that have worked, we still need to do that. On maybe perhaps a year from now, it might be, it will be a lot better, but we can't drop the other things, because now we have the vaccine. Next slide. Next slide, please. And this is a, you know, part of, I introduced this to you last two weeks ago, that we still have to do what we need to do to stay safe, even though we now have a vaccine. We're required to vaccinate about two hundred and seventy thousand Passaic County residents. Obviously, that includes people that are being vaccinated in the hospitals and the long-term care and so forth. That is a deliverable in the state, because it's close to getting some level of herd immunity. And that number is, it can be an elusive number, but you know that that's a solid start in protecting the entire community. All right, and that's my presentation today, and happy holidays to everyone. What a year, twenty twenty-one will be better. We have a lot more to celebrate, starting in January. And I'm just excited and looking forward to better days ahead. Thank you.
Director.
How is it decided how many vaccinations each entity gets? Looking at a county like Passaic County with over five hundred thousand residents, five hundred seems like not too many. Is there some kind of a guideline that they follow?
So I believe that they responded based on the number of facilities or health departments that have requested to participate in the vaccination program. Plus, they have identified certain hotspots of COVID-19 in the state. And certain municipalities, for example, the city of Newark, the city of Elizabeth. There are cities that have a large burden of COVID-19. And in Passaic County, the city of Patterson also received this patch in addition to Passaic County. In the county of Essex, they're also doing mega sites, so they were allotted more. But the allotment did not come based on, you know, in other words, the state and the feds looked at whatever data, and then they allotted it to us. Going forward, they have asked us to request a certain amount based on what we feel our throughput will be. And so different municipalities in Passaic County have, they have to send a request through my office. So they have said, okay, we can do three hundred a day, so this is what we are requesting. So I get, I put in those requests to the state, and they push it up the flagpole. So it's a complicated process, but it's based on a number of variables.
How many municipalities have requested their own Moderna vaccinations or Pfizer?
Okay, so in Passaic County, we have six health officers, and it is through the state look at the health department as the source. So in other words, Wayne has requested, Wayne is doing a site, and they will cover their two municipalities. The city of Passaic has a site, have identified a site, and has requested, you know, whatever they needed. The city of Patterson as well. And so that's, the state is asking for the requests through the health officers, through the county health department. And that's how that is done.
All right, thank you.
Director, just want to point out, we also had an apology from the feds, because they got the number wrong. I think we were twenty percent less than what they said they were going to give us, and we got an apology out of them, so that helped. At least we know we're not crazy. It is what it is. Maybe things will be better after January twentieth.
Director. Director?
Yes.
Through you. Is there any data to indicate if someone gets vaccinated, the possibility of them testing positive down the road?
I have not seen anything like that. I don't, I'm not, I haven't written anything to that effect.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Director, through you.
Thank you. Hello, Charlene. Happy New Year. Quick question, can you just go over the different categories, 1A, 1B, 1C, two, and who are in those particular groups, and where a person will find out what area they fall into?
So the 1A group comprises of healthcare workers. So whether they work at a hospital or a long-term care facility, or in a doctor's office, or a dental office, sorry about your finger. Other essential workers may also fall into that group. And they could include people who work at pharmacies, people who work in funeral homes, group homes, EMS. All of those people are part of Group 1A. Group 1B, and they can find this at the State Department of Health, who last night at a meeting had to determine exactly who is going to be in 1B, because there, it changes. But initially, the critical populations in 1B were first responders, so your police officers, your fire, and so forth. But here's, there's a caveat, and the caveat is, if in your capacity as a police officer, for example, you have additional training as an EMS, then you will qualify in 1A. So apparently, some people don't have all of that training. So I know, for example, when we were doing a lot of, a lot of health fairs at the Willbrook Mall, that a group from the Sheriff's Department would come, and they would be doing blood pressures and other screenings with us. So that group will fall into 1A. In addition, because we asked this question specifically, people who are at the testing sites or at the vaccination sites, they fall into 1A because they are additionally exposed. And so they're looking at the risk, people who are at higher risk, to determine which group they fall into. Yeah, does that, do you have a special group you were thinking of?
Yeah, I'm thinking about me, in particular.
You're dead last.
Yeah, no, not so much, not so much, because, you know, I want to jump a line or anything like that. I definitely want to wait my turn. But there's a lot of feeling coming from the community about people who are scared to take the vaccine. And, you know, as leaders, they look to us for, you know, whether or not we're going to establish the example. And I told them, as soon as I'm eligible, when my time comes, I will be in line. I'm waiting as soon as my number is called. And, you know, people beat me up, like, well, you didn't get it, why should I get it? You didn't get it, because I'm not eligible yet. But as soon as I am eligible, I'm not a, you know, a healthcare worker, but as soon as my number is called, I'll be there.
I think that, I think that governments and others are probably in the latter 1B. And I believe because, because of increased, well, increased risk with more essential workers. In other words, we can't run the county without our county leaders. So then you have to be vaccinated, so that, is that good?
That's debatable. That's debatable. Tony, Tony will tell you otherwise.
That goes along with COOP COG, which is federal policy about continuation of government. So what she's saying is correct. We all are emergency responders, every one of us.
Yeah.
So 1B is the short answer. Are teachers also included in that 1B category?
Yes, yes.
Does that include?
Transportation workers, so bus drivers, train people, you know, people who come, that work for the water company, the gas company. If you're, if you're public facing, then your risk is increased, so.
What about substitute, what about substitute teachers and tutors that interact with the same population as other teachers?
Well, I want to say they would fall into the teacher category.
Okay. I would agree. I hope they do. I hope they do. Okay.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. We have a vaccine, and we're going to plug right in.
Just, if I could just ask Tony, as well as Dr. Gungil, whoever has the answer, when will we have the, you know, infographics and things that we can share with the public?
We are working on that as we speak. We have COVID working. I have my health education team working with Neela to put stuff up on the site. We were just waiting for Mr. De Nova to announce this today, and also for Vault to get that set up on the site. And once that's up, I already have the information, it's just a matter of pushing it forward. So by the end of the day, everything is going to be on our website.
Perfect. I know, I know we all want to, I know we all want to push out the information to all of our constituencies. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gungil.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gungil. We'll finish with the Freeholder reports. I think Freeholder Laporte was actually next.
He is.
Thank you, Freeholder Laporte.
You're psychic there, Director, on top of everything else. Yes, I have nineteen resolutions as part of the consent agenda regarding the Public Works Department and request support from my colleagues on that. Also, I would like to take this moment to thank all the members of the Public Works Committee, as long as, as well as all of our employees. But the Public Works Committee, which involves the engineering department, buildings and grounds, roads, you know, all the infrastructure of the county. The department heads and their employees work day in and day out to make sure that this county is operational and up and running as far as our infrastructure is concerned. So I'm very grateful and thankful that we have them on the team. I also would like to take this opportunity, we've heard so much negativity about 2020, and rightfully so, from many aspects, but more importantly, I'd like everyone to remember those who have left us because of COVID-19, those who are battling right now as we speak, struggling to survive the infection, and all those who pitched in and helped, whether you passed out a box of food on the line, whether you were at a testing site, the Sheriff's Department, their personnel, the Health Department, their personnel. It's just, I'm so proud to be part of this team, to be able to say that. Passaic County is made up of wonderful, wonderful people, and I'm grateful for them, day in and day out. And hopefully, 2021 will bring us better things with the vaccine being the first start. I also would like to thank my colleagues here on the board, who work tirelessly and effortlessly throughout to find out, get the answers to all the problems. We work together, along with our administration, Anthony De Nova, and his staff, County Council, I can't say enough about these folks. I'm just, I just want to reiterate, we have a great team here in Passaic County. I'm so proud to be part of it. And I'm wishing everyone a happy, a healthy, and a safe new year for all of you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Laporte. Ditto. Goes with that sign. Freeholder Octor?
Thank you so much, Director. I don't have too much more to add after Freeholder Laporte's New Year's message, other than to say that I'm, to reiterate that I'm also proud to work with this team and our staff, which has worked incredibly hard under very difficult circumstances. And, you know, glad that we are bringing back our two Freeholders, Freeholder James, Freeholder Best. I know that I am looking forward to being up for reelection next year and am very much excited to be able to talk about all the achievements that we made in this year, where we haven't been able to go out, we haven't been able to talk about it as much. But I'm very, very proud of the job we did, and I'm more than happy to talk about that next year. So I wish everybody a happy new year, and hope everybody's had a good holiday season, and please, everybody stay safe.
Freeholder, Freeholder Bartlet?
Thank you very much, Director. You know, everyone's coming up with their messages about what we've learned in 2020. And I think, you know, reflecting, and particularly as Deputy Director Laporte did, on what we've seen and what this board and all of our county employees have done this year. You know, I think we've seen the difference between disorganized government and organized government, and the things that this team that has come together and become so cohesive in easier times. You know, all of the drills with local elected officials and local folks that Dr. Gungil ran over the years to get us ready for a year like this one. All of the ways in which our various departments have learned to work together in better times made us able to do all the things that we were able to do this year. Obviously, it took federal funding as well, and we're grateful for our representatives in Washington making sure that the CARES Act passed and that we had the opportunity to access federal funding. But we were able to support small businesses and landlords and tenants, and people who needed food, and people who needed rental assistance, and people who needed a testing site, and then at-home testing, and now our continuing mobile testing site. And all of the other ways, the website that Kelly and her team put together to promote the businesses that were struggling through this very, very difficult time. We've really seen when a team like Passaic County pulls together, what we can accomplish. And it's not, it hasn't been a solution for everyone. I know that I have friends who've lost businesses this year, and friends who've lost loved ones. But we've been able to do as much as we have, and I'm grateful to all my colleagues and to our whole team. Like Freeholder Laporte did, I want to thank particularly the members and the staff that served the committee that I chaired this year, Health and Human Services. We were kind of the epicenter of the Health Department and Preakness Healthcare Center, and so many of the other services that were running on overdrive all year to make sure that our residents were protected. And I'm grateful for everyone who was part of that effort and part of that team. I also, it seems like, feels like a million years ago now to talk about the spring and the summer and the fall of this year. But I want to thank everyone who was involved in our Census 2020 outreach effort that began around this time last year, that continued all the way through October fifteenth, very literally to the moment that the Census website shut down for the next ten years. We were out there with volunteers, with the dozen members of our Complete Count Committee, with everyone who made it possible. We don't know the numbers yet, but what we do know is that we exceeded the last three censuses in terms of what we were able to achieve with self-reporting. And hopefully, that's going to mean that Patterson becomes a first-class city, that Passaic County continues to have those numbers that made it possible for things like CARES Act funding to come through for us. And the entire team that made the Census 2020 outreach effort possible was incredibly helpful. And in closing, Sandy, I want to recognize you and your chairmanship this year and the leadership of you, of this board. You are the last Director of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. It's been a hundred and eighty-three-year run, but we're going to reconvene next week as the Board of County Commissioners. And I couldn't be prouder to have been part of this team since I was elected in 2012. And like Assad, I look forward to 2021 and beyond. So everyone, thank you very much, and have a great new year.
Thank you, Freeholder Bartlet. It's been a honor to serve with you guys and everybody in Passaic County. It truly is a family here. Freeholder Best?
Good morning, everyone. Again, I just want to reiterate everything that my colleagues have said thus far. Great team, great job, Sandy, great job, Tony, Charlene, and everyone else at the county. 2020 has been a very difficult year. Bruce and I had to run an election somehow. In the midst of all of this, unlike any other time, it was totally different. And what we kept telling ourselves and telling everybody else is, it's the work that matters. And it wasn't so much about knocking on doors and going to events, but really making sure that our administration, Tony and his team, has everything they need, making sure that we're available, making sure that we review the data, make sure we establish- sure that we review the data, make sure we establish good examples for our community to follow. And we were successful in our victory. You know, President-elect Biden talks often about how, as a country, we need to build back better. And I think that Passaic County is uniquely positioned to actually build back better in 2021. We already had, despite everything that was going on, we, we've had a nice run here in the county, thanks to some great leadership at the helm. And I think 2021 is going to be a banner year for us. I'm very hopeful for what the future holds in our new County Commissioner form of government. So I'm looking forward to that. And God bless you all. Happy New Year. Me and my nine fingers will hold on.
Thank you, Freeholder Best. Freeholder Duffy?
Yes, ma'am. Just like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everything's pretty much been said. Go through the ranks that, you know, from the Mosquito Commission to Public Works, to the Health Department, to your Leadership Director and the Administration, all makes us, the Freeholders, look so good. We do have a great team here. Pat and I have been around for a little bit, and I've never seen such a smooth transition. Your leadership is an awful, awful big role in keeping us all, all together. So I wish everyone a Happy New Year. I know the businesses are struggling out there. It's going to come around, God willing, sooner than later. This vaccine's got to help us and get us over the hump. 21, as far as Passaic County is concerned, I think we're in good shape. And I wish everyone a healthy and happy new year, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Duffy. Couldn't do it without you. Freeholder James?
It's like biblical, the last shall be first. So anyway, I just want to reiterate what everybody else said. We've had a very rough year, but it's actually been a very good year. Our response to this pandemic has been second to none. And Tony, I give you a lot of the credit for that. You know, I think that we have, we have challenges in this county, and I think we've met every single one of them to the best of our abilities because of you. And there's a lot of people who can thank you for keeping them safe. And I know that sounds, you know, a little trite sometimes, but it's not trite at all. Saving a life meant everything. And our policies and the way that we've handled things, I am proud to say that I'm part of this team that respected every single life in Passaic County, and we did our best for you to make sure that people were taken care of. And, and it shows, and it really shows. Dr. Gungill and her staff, Sandy as Director for this year, you have been remarkable. And I want to thank everybody who returned, TJ and myself to this board. Now, I've been on the board 15 years. In a couple of days, I will have completed 15 years. Pat and Terry have one year more than me. And the three of us have seen the board change more than a full board in our time here. So I can honestly say, I tried to count the number of Freeholders that I served with, and I lost count. But I got to say, this is the best board I think we've ever had. And that's just from my perspective and from dealing with boards of Freeholders since 1975, really, since '74, '75. It really is the best board that this public could ever hope for. And I'm proud to work with all of you. And I'm thankful that I get three more years to do it. So Happy New Year to everybody. I hope your holidays are safe. And I hope that when that ball drops, I'm going to be very happy that we're going into a new year. Let's hope it's a much better year than this year.
Thank you, Freeholder. I do have a little public service announcement to share with everyone and with the public. Our IT Director, Micah Hesenger, let me know that the possibility for fraud related to the vaccine is really, really high. So everyone needs to be aware that you should not, by any means, be contacted by anyone seeking any personal information, social security numbers, bank numbers, all that kind of stuff in order to receive your vaccine. You don't need to share that information with anyone. Your insurance information may be taken, but that would be all. And if you'd like to check on this morning, it comes from the FBI, you can go to our website at www.pasaiccountynj.org/vaccinationwarning. Or you can go to passaiccountynj.org/vaxfraud. That will also work, but please, anybody who's going for the vaccine, do not give out any public, any of your information to anyone, except if they're asking for medical. Charlene, Anthony, is there, I mean, do you want to elaborate on that?
Director, can you hear me?
Not well. I can hear you.
All right, I'm sorry. I was having technical difficulty. I'll try to talk as loud as I can so that you can hear me. Is that better?
I don't know if everybody else can.
I can hear you clearly, Tony. You're okay. I'm going to mute myself while you talk.
I don't know if I'm okay, but hopefully you could hear me. So first, while Charlene was giving her presentation, I wanted to mention that, starting on Sunday, January 4th, and continuing on Friday, the 8th, and Saturday, the 9th, I think those are the correct dates, Preakness Healthcare Center will begin to vaccinate both the residents and staff and essential caregivers at the facility. CVS will be administering those vaccines to Preakness. So I just wanted to get that in there as well, that this has been a difficult year, as you well know, for Preakness Healthcare Center. The long-term care facilities were our biggest challenge and cannot say enough. Great things about the leadership of Lucinda Carrato and her team and the hours and the work that they had put in. I'm not so sure Lucinda has taken a day off since March 8th, when this really all began. She's an incredible woman. We're very, very lucky to have her. In terms of what the board said, in terms of our response, first, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. And, and as you know, a good leader can't do things alone. And I have great people around me. Charlene has been a rock star throughout this entire pandemic. Many a time, I went to bed, put my head on the pillow and said, "Thank God we have her," because her leadership was second to none, and she guided us through this pandemic with a steady hand, most of the time steadier than many of us in the room, which was a great calming force for all of us. I will say, to, to reiterate what was said about this board and Fielder James, I have now, in my 17 years as the Administrator of this county, have served under 21 different Freeholders. And many and all of them, good people, but collectively, I have never served under a board as cohesive and, and grounded in direction as this board. And I have to tell you that my team knew what you expected out of us, which made it so much easier for us to achieve what we were able to achieve. The leadership of this board was fantastic, made our lives better. Sitting in my conference room at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night, figuring out how we're going to do everything that we needed to get done, but importantly, knowing what you expected out of us made our job that much easier. And a lot of people were responsible for that. And, you know, while it's nice to, to hear you all throw credit on me and Charlene, without Kelly at my side the whole time, without Matthew, Lewimhoff, Sherry, our purchasing agent, you have no idea the hours and the work she put in to make sure that we had all the PPE we needed and was there around the clock, whether it was Sunday night, we were sitting at my conference room table saying, "Oh, my God, do we have this?" And Sherry was always there to answer her phone. Rich Cahill, from our, you know, our CFO, Barry Feinberg. Just, it goes on and on and on, the number of people that, that, that surrounded us and was able to allow me and my team to do what we did to serve the people of Passaic County. Public service has always been a part of who I am, whether it was an elected official or now an appointed official. And I'll tell you, going through this just kind of solidified why I chose public service, because it is heartwarming to be able to help people in need, never thinking that the need would be as great as it is right now. But it has never been, you know, a, a more satisfying time in my life, as crazy as that might sound, because I wish we hadn't had to go through this. But to be a public servant and to be a public service to, to the residents of Passaic County is truly an honor. And it's an honor to serve each of you, as well as the 500,000 residents of Passaic County. So thank you all very, very much for your leadership and your support for me and, as I said, my entire team. And I don't want to leave anybody out, and I know that I have, but Leslie and County Council's office was terrific, Nadeesh, you name it, up and down the line, Buildings and Grounds, Kenny's people, you know, just the Sheriff's Department, you can't say enough great about the Sheriff's Department, and they were there with us side by side. And of course, Micah, who is running this meeting and not on, but, you know, Josh Schmukler and Aton, honestly, the, the work that they did on the IT side. And I'll go on and on and on, because it really was a team effort. And I thank each and every person on this call and in the county for all of the work that they've done. And just one last thing that I wanted to mention, that yesterday, Warden Tolarico served his last day physically in our jail. He will be on the books for a little while with his terminal leave, but Warden Tolarico is retiring. I spoke to him yesterday. He has done a marvelous job with that jail. That jail has never been in better shape than it is today, and he did it under very, very trying circumstances. We went through a lot. We went through the ACLU lawsuit. He got us out of the consent decree earlier than anyone would have imagined we could have. He has run that place with a steady hand. Anytime that I was in any state meetings, and soon as I said I was from Passaic County, they would tell me, "You have the best warden in the state of New Jersey." And, and I said, "Thank you," and we know, because he truly served with honor and dignity. And I was always proud to say he was part of Passaic County. And it started back in 2009, when he wasn't the warden, but he assisted in the closure of our detention center. And he was at every meeting at my side when we met with Essex County. And every time he opened his mouth, I was proud to say that he worked for Passaic County. So I want to wish Warden Tolarico all the best in whatever he decides to do. Way too young to sit home in a rocking chair. I'm sure he's going to do something. As I said, a very bright man, and I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people looking to hire him and to take advantage of the services and knowledge that he has to offer. So I will end there. I had to catch up because I was muted for so long. It was all pent up. But thank you again very much. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Anthony. And you're so right about Warden Tolarico. He's a wonderful person. We're going to move on to the oral portion. Could I have a motion to open up the oral portion of the meeting?
Second. Freeholders after?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Ast?
Yes.
Upee? James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Laporte?
Yes.
Director Lazzara?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a couple minutes, Luke?
All I can, Director, I can start. First of all, I can say, the email address, public@passaiccountynj.org. There was no emails received that, through, through that, through the email system. We do have 10 comments or 11 comments that I like to try to get through for you, and I'll read them. I'll start from... I'll start with the, I'll start with the newest ones, we go backwards. There's three comments from Bob Karashi. "Thank you, Tony, for all you do and everyone else that was, that you mentioned." "Thanks for Charlene Gungill and her leadership, second to none." "Thank you to the Freeholders and the Administrator, County Council, and others from the nonprofit sector for supporting our work in this very difficult year. We appreciate all the work and, all your work and sacrifice." We have a comment from Anna Pincham. "Good morning, Freeholders. May you have a blessed new year and be safe." We have a comment from Yogish Dave. "Any link for more info on the web for COVID vaccines, waiting lists, sign up, and locations?" I believe that was all answered before in, in the presentations. Cat Dodger, "Will court employees have early, earlier access to the vaccine?" We have a comment from Jer Tej Coopers. "Thank you for all this great information." We have two, two comments from Cynthia Carrero. "I am a school nurse and I need the vaccine, please. How do I sign up?" We also have a comment from Victor Boriga. "Good morning, everyone." We also have two comments from Kim Marie Klein. "I will, I will be calling you about the court system." Also, you have to figure out how to work out the problem in court and papers. I also have a comment from Karen Cisco. "Thank you for your remarkably, remarkable leadership through the, through the tough year. Wishing you all a very happy and healthy new year." As you all know, Karen Cisco is the former Executive Director of your council. Also, Micah, do we have any, anybody on or any comments?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, Director, I believe that concludes, that concludes. We have 13 comments on Facebook,
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
I'm moving.
Freeholders after? Hartley?
Yes.
Ast?
Yes.
B?
Yes.
Yes. James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Laporte?
Yes.
Director Lazzara?
Counsel, do we have any late starters or amendments?
Director, before you, before you move on, the, the comment on the courts, Louis, if you could respond back to her and tell her that the courts are a separate entity from county government and maybe give her the court administrator's phone number, I think that's who she probably needs to reach to be directed to.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sandy, can we do the two-third vote resolution before you move on to the late starters?
Oh, I thought we had to do that first. Okay, yeah, sure. Could we have a motion to move K1?
I'll move it.
Second.
Real call?
Freeholders after?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Ast?
Yes.
Upee?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Laporte?
Yes.
Power?
Yes. Okay, now, Matthew, our counsel. Do we have any starters?
We do have two late starters. L72, which is a resolution canceling... We do have two late starters. L72, which is a resolution canceling unexpended, unexpended balances of anticipated revenue and appropriations made in the grant fund pursuant to NJSA 48,4-60, and L73, a resolution approving volunteer accident insurance coverage policy with Philadelphia Insurance Co. for calendar year 2021 for the county of Passaic pursuant to NJSA 48,11-5M. There is no need for an executive session or any amendments. I just remind all the members of the board, if there's anything you want pulled off, the consent agenda to do that via a motion through the director. And if I could, Director, as this is my last meeting, the last meeting of my first year as county council, I want to thank the board. It's really, as a kid who grew up in Passaic County, it's been the honor of my life. And thank you for putting your faith in me. And I look forward to what is hopefully an uneventful 2021. So thank you all.
Oh, thank you. Your skills and your devotion to this county is unparalleled. We're so lucky to have you, Matt.
Done a great job this year, Matt. Thank you.
Matthew.
Hey, can I have a motion to add L72 and L73 to the consent agenda?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Louis, you need it. Freeholders after.
Yes.
Freeholder Bartlet.
Yes.
Freeholder Best.
Yes.
O Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Lizara.
Yes. Can I have a motion to move the consent agenda L1 to L73?
Move it.
Second.
Director, before you take the roll call, I did want to just point out, and I apologize if it was already mentioned while I was having some technical difficulties, but Resolution 61, which is the award of contract for the replacement of the Fair Lawn Avenue Bridge, long overdue. This project began before my tenure as your administrator 17 years ago. So I don't laugh because it's funny. I laugh because sometimes government can be very frustrating. But nonetheless, we have awarded, with your affirmative vote here in a few seconds, award the replacement of that bridge. So long overdue, the Worth Bridge in Passaic County, as you know, it connects Fair Lawn and Bergen County. It's a jointly owned bridge that Passaic County maintains, so.
Thanks. So where are we? Are we doing a roll call now, Lou?
Yes.
Can anybody move? Okay.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Uffey.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Yes. Motion to move the personnel agenda.
Yeah, go ahead, Lou.
Director, we have a amendment. So we need a motion to add the amendment to the personnel agenda.
I'll move it, Lou.
Second.
I'll move that, Lou.
Okay, I heard you. And thank you, sir. Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Uffey. James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Lizara.
Yes.
Okay. Now, can I have a motion to move the personnel agenda?
I'll move it.
I'll second. Freeholders after.
Hold on before roll call, if I just may interrupt one more time. I apologize. But on your personnel agenda is the hiring of new deputy county administrator. We did an extensive search at over 60 resumes. And on your agenda today is a gentleman named Mark Seaman. He is presently the administrator in the borough of Midland Park in neighboring Bergen County. So I'm very excited to get him on board and to begin the work and let Kelly go back to her passion and her love of our director of Wilma Historic Affairs. So thank you for the support on that hire, and I look forward to all of you getting to meet him soon, I hope.
Thank you, Anthony. Good to see you, Kelly. Looking forward to you being happy in the position you love.
I know where to find you, Kelly. I won't miss you. I'll get you.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Yes. I have a motion to move the bills.
I'll move the bills, Lou.
I'll second. Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Uffey. James.
Yes.
Free Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Yes.
Director, before you close, before you close out, could I just make an announcement for the 184th reorganizational meeting will be held virtually next Thursday, January 7, at 5:30, virtually on WebEx and Facebook Live.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Yes.
Uffey.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe, happy, joyful New Year and a great... Listen, next year's got to be better than this past year.
Hopefully, hopefully. You too, Sandy.
All right, guys.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you all very much.